We're gonna get started. Good evening. Today is Wednesday, May 11th. The time is 6:30 PM and I am calling this meeting the Macomb Township Board of Trustees to order. We will say the pledge.
(inaudible). The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Posey, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Trustee Cusmano.
Here.
Trustee Lucido.
Here.
Trustee Oliver.
Here.
Trustee Nevers.
Present.
Treasurer Jollette.
Here.
Clerk Posey here. Supervisor Viviano.
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you. Moving on to approval of the agenda, are there any additions, deletions, or corrections?
Mr. Chairman, we have a proposed add-on number 16, closed session to update and discuss contract negotiations for collective bargaining unit per MCL 15.268-1 subsection C.
Is there a motion?
Chair, move to approve the agenda with the addition?
Support.
Any discussion? Motion by Treasurer Jollette, supported by Trustee Lucido, to approve the corrected agenda. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to approval of the bills, is there a motion? Move to approve?
Second.
Any discussion on the bill run? Motion by Treasurer Jollette, supported by Clerk Posey, to approve the bills. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item four, approval of the special meeting minutes from April 19th, 2022, and the closed session meetings, closed session meeting minutes from April 19th, 2022.
And meeting minutes from April 19th.
Oh, and meeting minutes from April 20th, 2022.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? Motion by Clerk, or Treasurer Jollette, supported by Trustee Cusmano. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to public comment, at this time, if anyone has a public comment on the agenda items, you can speak at the microphone on the right-handed side of the room, or if you're participating remotely, you can digitally raise your hand. Nobody present? Anybody remotely?
No, sir.
Okay, we're gonna move on. Moving on to the consent agenda, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, move the consent agenda in its entirety?
Support.
Any discussion on the consent items? Hearing none. Motion by Treasurer Jollette, supported by Trustee Lucido, to approve the consent agenda. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item number eight. We're gonna do a little presentation. It's a resolution honoring the De La Salle Collegiate High School basketball team, the 2021-22 state champions. This time, I'd like to ask for a motion.
So moved.
Support.
Trustee Lucido, would you read the motion, or read the resolution into the record?
Sure. Resolution honoring Macomb Township members of the 2021-2022 De La Salle Collegiate High School Basketball Championship Team. At a regularly scheduled meeting of the Macomb Township Board of Trustees, Macomb County, State of Michigan, held on May 11th, 2022, at 6:30 PM, the following preamble and resolution were offered. Whereas, De La Salle High School, based in Warren, Michigan, fields a basketball team known as "The Pilots." And whereas, the De La Salle Pilots competed in 27 games in the 2021-2022 basketball season, defeating 20 opponents. And whereas, the De La Salle Pilots' victories included defeating Grand Blanc by a score of 67 to 58 in the State of Michigan Division One Basketball Championship on March 26, 2022. And whereas, the 2022 state championship is the first state title in De La Salle basketball program history, and the first in Division One in Macomb County history. And whereas, a first state championship season is an extremely, in a extremely competitive division, can only be achieved through extraordinary teamwork, superior strategy, disciplined preparation, and exceptional physical execution. And whereas, the following three De La Salle basketball team members and one assistant coach are residents of Macomb Township. Student athletes Brady Drogoch, Michael Sulaka, Brayden Holder, and assistant coach Ron Holder. Now therefore be it resolved, the Macomb Township Board of Trustees, acting as the elected body representing all the residents of Macomb Township, recognize the exemplary achievements of the entire De La Salle basketball program, and specifically recognizes those four pilots who are also members of the Macomb Township community, and publicly congratulates the De La Salle Pilots living in Macomb Township and the entire De La Salle basketball program. On behalf of Clerk Christie Al Posey, Treasurer Leon Jollette, Trustees Charlie Oliver, Frank A. Cusmano Jr., Nancy Nevers, and Peter J. Lucido III, Supervisor Frank Viviano declares this resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Trustee Lucido.
Mr. Chairman, would it be more efficient just to pass a resolution honoring De La Salle's all sports programs? They seem to dominate everything lately. We've done their football team, their basketball team. They're doing great.
They're doing great, and so are the residents, our residents that are on those teams. At this time, I'm gonna ask for a roll call to adopt that resolution.
Trustee Lucido.
Yes.
Trustee Oliver.
Yes.
Trustee Cusmano.
Yes.
Trustee Nevers.
Yes.
Treasurer Jollette.
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Supervisor Viviano.
Yes. Resolution is adopted. Congratulations to our pilots. Moving on to a public hearing. We have a public hearing, this is public hearing number one, for the Chelsea Park Drive, Newcastle Court, Amesbury Drive, Replacement Special Assessment District. This'll be SAD MA 101-P, and it's a request to adopt resolution number three. So at this time, I'm gonna open the public hearing. The time is 6:40, I'm sorry, 6:38 PM. Anyone who wishes to speak, you may make your way to the microphone on the right-hand side of the room. Anyone who's participating remotely can digitally raise your hand. Anyone wishes to speak on, at this public hearing for this SAD? Somebody? Anybody remotely?
No, sir.
No. So at this time, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Again, the time is 6:38 PM. Is there a motion to adopt resolution number three?
Motion.
Support.
Second.
Who got what? I lost track.
Christie got the, then Nancy got the second.
Okay. Any discussion on the resolution number three? Hearing none. We have a motion by Clerk Posey, supported by Trustee Nevers, to adopt resolution number three.
I gotta call the roll.
Clerk Posey, call the roll.
Clerk Posey, yes. Trustee Nevers.
Yes.
Trustee Cusmano.
Yes.
Trustee Lucido.
Yes.
Trustee Oliver.
Yes.
And Treasurer Jollette.
Yes.
Supervisor Viviano.
Yes. The resolution is adopted. Moving on to item 10, now we have a request to adopt a resolution number four, and to schedule a public hearing at number two, for the Chelsea Park, Newcastle Court, Amesbury Drive, road replacement SAD. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Van Tiflin, want to give us some background on this part?
Yes, Mr. Chairman and Board members. With the adoption of resolution number three, we're now in a position where we need to schedule the second public hearing, which is the roll hearing. That is with the adoption of resolution number four. We're requesting a date of June 8th of 2020, or 20, I'm sorry, 2022, to hold that hearing.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I have a general question regarding these SADs with regards to roads. Is it, how is the cost broke down? And is it, has it been communicated? How much will be on the tax bill of these individuals? Do they know the amount?
So the roll will be available in the clerk's office for viewing. That's part of this resolution that you're about to pass, or you passed and you're about to pass. That will be available for the next month until that hearing, and then that hearing is when that, the roll, how much each individual parcel will be charged through the Special Assessment District. And the board will review it. The board will set an interest rate, a payback term, all of the other things that go along with assessing a parcel.
Usually, what is the term? Is it over 20 years or 10 years, or do you know?
Typically, typically in Macomb Township, it's been 10, but it's up to the board. The board can set that how it wants. You know, a lot of times for paving projects especially, you stick with a shorter term, like 10 years. But I've seen, you know, water and sewer projects go farther, you know, than that because those utilities last longer.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all I have.
Thank you, Trustee Cusmano. Any other questions before we all vote on this resolution? Okay. Motion by Clerk Posey, supported by Trustee Nevers, to adopt resolution number four, and to schedule a public hearing number two for the Chelsea Park SAD.
Clerk Posey, yes. Trustee Nevers.
Yes.
Trustee Cusmano.
Yes.
Trustee Lucido.
Yes.
Trustee Oliver.
Yes.
Treasurer Jollette.
Yes.
And Supervisor Viviano.
Yes. The resolution is adopted. Moving on to item 11, as a request to authorize the Engineering Department to execute a cost-sharing agreement for construction costs with Macomb County Department of Roads for the 2022 subdivision reconstruction program, which again is Chelsea Park, Amesbury Drive, and Newcastle Court. This is part of the Chelsea Park subdivision, in the amount of $535,000, $535,866. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Mr. Van Tiflin.
Yes, Mr. Chairman and Board members. The Macomb County Department of Roads did receive bids for this project. They came in a bit higher than what was originally estimated. The original estimate was $924,102. The bids came in for the project at $1,556,482, which is an increase of about 14% over what the estimate was. The estimate was done last July. Obviously, we've seen a lot of increases in a lot of our costs, and that's reflected in this bid. Department of Roads has given us the cost-share agreement for the project. They pick up $500,000 is their maximum. That's where they cap out, it's 50% up to that $500,000. That's where they're at, so the township would be responsible for the balance. Part of that will be coming out of the township's funds. The other part would come out of the Special Assessment District that the board has, those two resolutions that the board just addressed. So we've reviewed the agreement. We are recommending approval. The amount that the township would have to advance deposit to the county is $510,836. And the difference between that and the $535,866 that you see in there are the, is the cost of the engineering that we pay to our consultant directly, because the engineering consultant is working for the township, not the county. So with that, we're recommending approval.
Thank you, Mr. Van Tiflin. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. Motion by Treasurer Jollette, supported by Trustee Lucido, to approve the costs, or to execute the cost-sharing agreement with Macomb County Department of Roads for the Chelsea Park Reconstruction Program in the amount of $535,866. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item 12, we request to authorize the Engineering Department to prepare a formal petition for vintage lane paving SAD. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Mr. Van Tiflin.
Yes, Mr. Chairman and Board members. This is actually the second phase to the Chelsea Park Special Assessment District. If you remember, we split this into two projects to try and maximize the amount of money that we received from the county. They maxed us out at $500,000, and so we broke it up into two sections so that we would gain a million dollars towards the cost of the project. So normally, we would have an informal petition circulated. That's the policy that the board adopted. However, we've had a lot of discussion with the Chelsea Park people over many years, and they are confident that they have the 50% that would normally be part of the informal petition that would be required in order for us to go through to this step. So we're asking the board to bypass that step and just go to the formal petition so that this summer, they can start gathering those signatures so that we're ready, assuming that they get the signatures, to go to the county with an application for a project similar to the one that we're, we just approved the cost-sharing agreement for. So with that, recommending approval, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Van Tiflin. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. Motion by Clerk Posey, supported by Trustee Oliver, to authorize the Engineering Department to prepare a formal petition for the vintage lane SAD. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item 13, as a request to approve a position description and the wage in the Finance Department. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Mr. Tabaka.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor and Board members. I'm here to request a position be established for the reconstructuring of the Finance Department. The position is called Financial Analyst, and the job description, job description outlines those job functions. A salary was negotiated, we're not a speaker, with Ask Me, and that salary is $70,000 a year. And this is a budgeted position.
Thank you, Mr. Tabaka. Any questions? Discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I had a discussion with Mr. Tabaka before the meeting. It's my understanding that this is a fixed rate, subject to the annual pay increases that are negotiated in the agreement, but that there is no steps. So in other words, that person's gonna be slotted in at $70,000 and not get automatic step pay increases other than the percentage which is negotiated. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Correct.
This is effectively a new step in the finance track.
And I have one other question. I noted that, that item 17 in the job description oversees the processes of Township's commercial credit card program, including but not limited to assisting all departments in implementing, processing, and reporting credit card charges. I didn't ask this question during the bill run, because it wasn't properly before, but in the commercial credit card section of the bill payments, I have a question regarding the process and procedure by which that occurs. Is there gonna be more than one person checking these credit card requisitions?
Yes.
I think Stacy's gonna address her question, Mr. Cusmano.
Yes, there are.
Yes. Currently in process, one of the administrative, administrative staff would enter the expense report. The department head or the township supervisor would then approve that expense report of those charges, and then it comes to finance, and we import it in, and then once a month, you as a board gets that report.
And, and is there two people who are overlooking a two-man check, a two-person?
Yes, because the department head, I guess oversees it or approves it, and then the Finance Department also reviews it as well.
So would that be this person's, in this position's job, then?
Yes, they would be doing it as well. I'm currently doing it as well. Actually, two of us in the Finance Department are currently doing it, so that actually wouldn't change. I'd just be giving this to another person to do.
Okay.
As well as myself, still ultimately checking it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Cusmano. Any more questions? Motion by Clerk Posey, supported by Trustee Oliver, to approve the position description and wage in the Finance Department. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item 14, as a request to approve the Second Amendment to the Consent Judgment for a property located on the west side of Lawrence Avenue, one mile south of 23 Mile Road, which would include permanent parcel numbers 0826-200011, 0823-451-002, and 0823-451-003. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Mr. Box.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board. This request before you, as you read, is a Second Amendment to a consent judgment. The original consent was recorded in 2007, and there's been one amendment since then. The bulk of this amendment is to change the access to a potential cell tower. The property in question is Hickory Hollow Golf Course. Part of the original consent allows them to have a cell tower on site. Their plans are in your packet. It essentially looks like a pine tree, if you will, and the access road, they're slightly changing from what was previously approved, so they are requesting the Second Amendment. Our staff has reviewed it, as well as legal staff, and we're recommending approval.
Thank you, Mr. Box. Any questions? Motion by Treasurer Jollette, supported by Trustee Lucido, to approve the Second Amendment Consent Judgment for permanent parcels IDs 0826-200011, 0823-451-002, and 0823-451-003. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item 15, as a request to approve an extension of the due diligence period for the purchase agreements dated January 11th, 2022, and the purchase agreement dated December 15th, 2021. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
So these are for the property, the former Wade Nursery property. This is both the east and western half, divided at the river. All the due diligence is done, as far as the buyers are concerned, the only holdup has been the Land Division Office trying to get the permanent parcel ID numbers split or established. I worked with an assessor this week. We're gonna have those numbers by the end of the week, and we are preparing to close on both of these sales by next Friday. Any, I'll take any questions. Okay, no questions. Motion by Treasurer Jollette, supported by Trustee Lucido, to approve the extension of the due diligence period for the purchase agreements dated January 11th, 2022, and December 15th, 2021. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Are we doing 16 now? Okay, at this time, we're gonna go on to public comment, non-agenda items. If anyone wishes to speak, we have a microphone on the right-hand side of the room, or anyone who wishes to participate digitally, please raise your hand. No one present? Anyone?
No, sir.
Nope. All right, moving on from public comment. Board comments, and then go.
Close session.
Okay. Close session now, or board comments first? All right, all right, we're gonna do board comments, and then we're gonna address item 16. Trustee Lucido.
Just two quick things. One, congratulations again to the De La Salle basketball team. I'm alumni from the class of 2000, and it's always great seeing your school achieve championships. And the other, wanna congratulate the supervisor on a great job at the State of the Township. I think you did a terrific job. It was funny, informative, and definitely shows the bright spots of the township, this board, and the residents. So thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Nevers.
Yes, I too would like to congratulate the basketball team from De La Salle. Seems that no matter what they do as far as sports, they seem to excel, and so congratulations to them. And I will be watching the State of the Township on YouTube. I'm sure it was hilarious, and I'm looking forward to that.
Don't take offense at the little joke I made about you. Trustee Oliver.
Same thing. Congratulations, De La Salle. They're really knocking it out when it comes to sports in southeastern Michigan, so congrats. And I didn't make it to the meeting, I'm sorry, but it's only goes great, and as usual, two down, and you've done a good job in both.
Thank you.
That's it.
Trustee Cusmano.
Mr. Chairman, I have a sober note. I asked the questions regarding special assessment districts. I had mentioned and circulated among the board members informally, this idea or concept that a special assessment district be set up for roads and specifically residential streets, that when the subdivision goes in, that there's seed money and a special assessment district to accumulate money at the end of 20 years or 15 years, and we're reaching that point, including my own subdivision, that there be money to be able to fund out the repairs to those roads. I think we should be forward-thinking enough to think down the, down the line, 15 or 20 years, and what our township is going to look like in the residential streets as these roads deteriorate. And some of them are going in as we speak, but I think it's something that we should, I will formally put together some type of a proposal for the board's review, and I thank you for the opportunity to share that with the board and the public.
Thank you, Trustee Cusmano. Treasurer Jollette.
I'd congratulate in advance the De La Salle baseball team, which is likely to win the state championship.
It's possible.
Okay. Clerk Posey.
I too congratulate the De La Salle basketball team. That's exciting that we had some members of the team from Macomb Township and an assistant coach. That's great news. On a voter's note, we have, I've announced several times that due to redistricting, there may be some polling location and precinct number changes. Our Facebook page, Macomb Township Clerk's Office, has plenty of different ways that you can verify your precinct number and polling location, along with our website, so please visit those prior to the August 2nd election. We will be mailing out new voter identification cards approximately next week sometime, so please check your mailbox, and when you get that information, don't discard it. It does, and it will have all your new voting information on it. I will continue to keep the residents posted on any additional changes and information with regards to elections, but please follow our Facebook page and visit our website. That's all I have.
Thank you, Clerk Posey. I guess I wanna add to the congratulations to my alma mater, De La Salle, and particularly the residents, who are the student athletes that participated in those teams, and our assistant coach. It is kind of exciting. Sadly, the De La Salle achieved its first state championship victory the year after I graduated, so. But they've been winners ever since. Shocking. State of the Township yesterday morning was a lot of fun. Thanks to Leanna and Christie for helping me prepare, and thanks to Beth, and Anne Marie, and Jody. You know, it took kind of all of us to get it all organized. We kinda, it was, it was with me, I was out sick, for those who don't know, so I had to rely heavily upon them to get, do a lot of the heavy lifting, so thank you for that. Thank you to Sycamore Hills and the Chamber for letting us put that on. It was a lot of fun, and we did have, we did a really great turnout, a lot of public officials. A lot of, number of residents came, so it was great. I appreciate everybody's support. Oh, the other thing I wanted to thank is the Dakota Drum Line, who came to the meeting and was an integral part of the presentation. It was a lot of fun to have them, and the kids were extremely talented. And if you've never had a chance to see the Dakota Drum Line, go ahead on our YouTube channel, you can check out our meeting, our State of the Township, and you can see how they performed. So with that, now, is there a motion to go into closed session?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Support.
I'm gonna ask you to actually read the motion into the record.
Right. And my new motion is... What I meant to say was, I move to add the collective bargaining agreement between Macomb Township and the Michigan...
Nope.
My apologies.
Number one on this page.
All right, scratch that previous motion. My new motion is to...
Number one.
I'd like to make a motion that we go into closed session to update and discussion, for update and discussion regarding negotiations for collective bargaining unit, closed session per MCL 15.268-1, open parentheses, C, close parentheses.
Support.
Thank you, Trustee Lucido.
Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. Motion by Treasurer Jollette, supported by Trustee Lucido, to go into closed session.
Treasurer Jollette?
Yes.
Trustee Lucido?
Yes.
Trustee Cusmano?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Clerk Alpozi, yes. And Supervisor Viviano?
Yes.
Motion is adopted. We will now enter closed session. Time is 7:00 PM. We are returning from closed session. Time is 7:30 PM.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Gillette?
I move to add the collective bargaining agreement between Macomb Township and the, and the Michigan Association of Public Employees to the May 11th, 2022, meeting agenda for the purpose of voting on approval of a successor agreement.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Cusmano, to add the collective bargaining agreement between Macomb Township and the Michigan Association of Public Employees, uh, to, to today's May 11th, 2022, meeting agenda for the purposes of voting and approval for the successor agreement.
Board members, please vote. A voice vote on this one, please.
Just both? Okay.
Oh, just a voice vote? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Gillette?
I move to approve the collective bargaining agreement between Macomb Township and the Michigan Association of Public Employees, effective July 1st, 2021, through June 30th, 2025.
Support. Any discussion? Motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Lucido, to approve the collective bargaining agreement between Macomb Township and the Mc- Michigan Association of Public Employees, effective July 1st, 2021, through July 30th, 2025. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
I move to adjourn.
Cusmano seconded.
I got it. Any discussion? Motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Cusmano, to adjourn the meeting. Members, please vote. Motion passes seven to zero. This meeting is adjourned. Time is 7:32.